So we can either find out whether or not we're duplicating the comments you're making, or be in a position to agree or express disagreement with positions that individual council members make about the subject. So could you please clarify exactly how you're going to be running the meetings and how you're going to allow the public to participate?
I'm happy to... Under the rules of procedure, or somewhat generally followed, the mayor has an awful lot of authority in determining procedurally how she would like to run the meeting. It does say that there's a process outlined. The mayor announces the subject, the staff and written materials presented, staff report is presented if any, staff responds to council staff, responds to council member questions, mayor opens the public hearing, and then there's public comment. It sounds like exactly what she just did. Now, I can't speak for how she's going to run meetings in the future, but that certainly is within the parameters of the process that has been followed in the past some way. So, I mean, when Bill was the mayor, I let the mayor decide how to run his meeting, and same thing with council member Dobby, and now with council member Lewis. They have an awful lot of flexibility, and it's really not the only thing the mayor gets to do is run the meeting, so.
I'll just respond real briefly. Through the League of California Cities, they have an educational process, and if any member of council or mayor goes to their seminars, which are held the third week of January every year, it's called the New Mayor's and Council Members Boot Camp, and it's in Sacramento. There are lessons about how to conduct your council meetings, and I've attended four of these in my tenure here, and this is how they say that you should do this. Because council members are supposed to present the information and then listen to public and not come with preconceived ideas, because members of the public have valuable input to be listened to and to be considered before a council is supposed to make their rulings. They may have their ideas about where they're leaning, but if they...that can change. So, it's clearly set out. So I think that it's going to be easy to follow. So do we have any public comments on this agenda item? Yes, please.
It's interesting that you follow the League's policy now, but you sure didn't when you were a council member and not a mayor. It would be nice to know who the staff is that made this direction, besides a city manager who's been in this office for a couple of months, a few months. Where this nepotism clause is coming from, there's never been an issue before, and if we're going to have a nepotism clause, it would seem that you would deal with it rather than through a clause. You'd deal with it in form of, is there an actual conflict? Or in your selection process, not through nepotism clause. But I guess inasmuch as it's on the website, that's something everyone would want to follow, Mayor Lewis. The Arts Committee, you want to disband an arts committee that has done so much to bring this community together, brought people into the park, brought them together as a community, a rather unusual event here in Atherton. You talk about volunteerism on your website, and what a wonderful thing it is, and you prefer to bill lane, but here you are in one of the best committees that we have for doing that, trying to disband it, as well as a number of other committees in which volunteers do volunteer. Audit and Finance, you want it to be selected as no one other than the mayor or the vice mayor, but what if the mayor or the vice mayor or both deemed there are other people on the council who are better able to serve in that capacity? You're not allowing for any kind of flexibility whatsoever with this resolution. The Environmental Committee, you say that you suggest that the activities of this committee are best served by regional and programmatic regulations and activities. That's ridiculous. We have Woodside, we have Hillsborough. I gave you lots of material when I researched this that showed that those communities do have very viable environmental committees and how they deal with it, and offers day-to-day suggestions to the people of their town that work for everybody. The Transportation Committee, why get rid of a transportation committee? Who better to have a community perspective as to what's going on with regard to one of the most important issues in this town than the people in the community? They don't always agree with the police, that's right, but they've come up with solutions that the police haven't always thought were viable, such as the Holbrook Lane solution or the keep-clear zones on Middlefield. Had it been just the staff, the will has would never have come into place. It's the people of the town who know what the issues are, they should be on these committees. And they also give us information that is clearly not in the city manager's report. Have any of these members of these committees been consulted? No. Have any members of the community actually had a chance to weigh in on this, besides this hearing right here, where we're limited to three quick minutes and rushing through my own considerations? Only because I want to set it on the record for when the parcel tax comes up and people know how you're misusing funds and abusing the system? No.
Yes, other comments?
Just a quick comment. I'm Larry Sweeney at Irving Avenue, and I'm on the Transportation Committee currently. This was...I was just selected for my second term on it. And I would say, we had a workshop on committees, as I recall, last summer, and discussed all of these committees. The staff recommended that the Transportation Committee be leaded, and in general, I think the council members strongly disagreed with that, as did the members of the Transportation Committee. And I really think it is useful, as Kathy said, I'm treasurer, well, actually, I'm now president of the Little Homes Association, but as treasurer, I got a lot of comments. As people pay their dues, we ask for suggestions, and a lot of them have to do with traffic. And so I would work with the resident and then submit discussion items for the Traffic Committee, which led to many, I think, improvements in safety. So I think it is a very good process. I think the more citizens you have on the committee, the better. And I think having the staff in a support role on that committee with the council members as representatives on the committee really works well and is a good way to go.
Other public comments?
Thank you. Sandy Crittenden. It's basically a question, I'd like to have an opinion, but I don't have enough information. In the Arts Committee, staff suggests that the activities of this committee may be best served through a nonprofit or local citizens group rather than as a formal town committee. Should the town desire to assist the group through funding efforts, formal contributions can be considered each year through the town budget process. My question is, the Rita Corbett Fund, is there...is this money going to be available if this were to happen? Or is this money just going to be sucked into the general fund and the Arts Committee now is set out on their own? That's one question. And the second question is, is the idea like this, I can imagine this would be similar to the Holbrook Palmer Park Foundation. It's a separate nonprofit that has its own funding source and does its own donor activities, but still takes advantage of the park facilities, having their own office and using the park, I believe, at no charge. So I'd like those answers, if at all possible, before anybody...before I could reach an opinion and before anybody else, I think, could make an intelligent choice also. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public? Count forward, please.
I'll come down the road. I am shocked, I must admit, I didn't see anything on this related to the Arts Committee. But there's a long, long history, and there's a responsibility that the town has. When Rita Corbett Evans, who conducted art classes in her home, when she put in her will that she would gift her home to the town on the condition that it was used as an art center. And we were advised by her then-city attorney that we couldn't do it there because of zoning, though I think afterwards, I figured probably could do a spot zoning. But we accepted that advice, and the recommendation was that we sell the house with the proceeds, build the facility and the park, which provided that zoning. Ross Hurwitz was the city manager, and he came up with the building that we came up with, was about half the money. The other money was put into a fund, presumably fund arts programs. I never really liked that idea, because I felt it was her home, and art centers should be used for that purpose. But in any case, we built that. And a few years later, well, then we committed, we formed a committee to study how we should use that, should include gallery space, workspace. And the recommendation was, we, the town, have a committee that would conduct this. I mean, we have a responsibility. We accepted a very generous gift from Rita Corbett Evans. We have a responsibility to carry out her wishes. We haven't done that. The building that is that art building, the money goes into the general fund. It should be going to the arts programs. No, that's wrong. Ethically, that's wrong. We have a serious responsibility here. We've done other things with it. We once gave, when Jean Perdon said, "Well, we could use, expand the pavilion and do the changing there for the brides," and then we made the main house, the art center in the park. It was there for a while. Then we took that back from them. I mean, we've had a history of treating that program very badly. And so we have a responsibility here. We have accepted a gift, and we need to...it's part of the town. And we've had a committee that's worked very hard with, without the kind of facilities that they were promised, and it's one of the great responsibilities we have, a high priority, in my opinion. And I'm shocked we didn't even think about not having that committee. We have a real responsibility. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public? Yes.
I think that it's important that when volunteers in the community are willing to serve the community, that they not be disenfranchised. And I think there is a feeling with some of these volunteers that because they expressed views or opinions that were not consistent with various referendums or elections, that they're being disengaged. And I don't think the town could afford to dispense with those type of people. I think the community benefits when people with different ideas and ideologies get together and discuss issues. It's very inefficient decision-making, but it's part of the democratic process. And it's like Winston Churchill said, "It's a terrible, terrible system until you consider any other, which is worse." Besides, it's probably the only time I think you're ever going to find Mr. David Leavis to keep agreeing on something. So, for that reason alone...
Is that true?
Well, for that reason alone, the Art Committee should be...I'll tell, but in general, I think the town will benefit from keeping the committees and having as many different council members of different views on the various committees as well.
Are there any other members of the public who'd like to speak on this issue? Seeing that, I will bring it back to council for council comments and discussion. Guys, now, would you like to go first?
Well, I thought the staff report was interesting. I'm going to go down through the list, starting with the annual reports. Putting a report together just for report's sake doesn't do much for me. I think we need to think about the, what value-added we're attempting to get from an annual report. I think it's very important to try and get the minutes of the various committees posted on the town website, and some of the committees aren't, don't even have postings, I don't believe, of meetings. I appreciated the work that Mike did as a staff person for the Rail Committee recently. We had a Rail Committee meeting, and almost the next day, he had a summary of what had been discussed at that meeting, and that was made available, even though the minutes won't be approved until the following meeting, at least it's out there as to, in terms of, you know, what was discussed, and I think that's important. As we go downstream and think about the website, think about the communication process we've talked about, we need to find the best ways to engage our residents. And I think keeping the communication process timely and up-to-date is one way to do that. Now, the annual, the annual report might be useful if it summarized some of the issues and some of the things that the committee feels that the council ought to be aware of, that the committee could be addressing. Maybe it'd be useful, and if we do an annual review of our committees and commissions, as we're doing here tonight, as part of that process, I just don't know, but I think we need to give some more thought as to what value added. Not just be a report that's filed and put on the shelf. The website, I think if a committee wants to have a website, there ought to be specific requests made to the council as to the reason why they think that they need to have a website, a special website, otherwise I think the town website would, should accommodate most of the communication needs there. I would do without the nepotism clause. It's only one example of potential perceived conflicts of interest situations. I can think of many other situations. I think that we want to pick the best people for our committees and commissions, and I think the time the council makes its selection part of that process, it should be thinking first and foremost of the, of the, each individual that's being proposed. And I'd hate to get on to the slippery slope of putting something into the town saying that, okay, we're against nepotism, and what's the next thing going to be? I just, let's leave it alone. Let's just not go there. One of the things that's not addressed is the voting procedures for committee membership. I think there should be a clear statement that the members will be selected by a majority voted of the council members present. I think we ought to do away with the ranking selection process that's been used several times. Arts Committee, I think we ought to listen to what the members of the Arts Committee have to say on the subject. One of the, one of the things that comes to mind here is if they were to go out on their own, they would have to, as a 501(c)(3), they would have accounting requirements. Right now, the town handles all those kinds of things, and I don't think we're ready to make that kind of a break. I think we need to engage the committee and have further discussions there. The Finance Committee, you know, the Finance Committee began with just two council persons. And then we set up an Audit Committee. The Audit Committee was a separate committee that I was involved in, along with some other folks in the room here, in advocating for Audit Committee that had a majority of residents and the committee chair be a resident. And it turned out that the two finance council members were paid members of that committee. And then later, the Finance Committee was expanded to include resident members, and finally, the Audit and Finance Committees were combined into one committee. And I just think the idea of having the two council members that are signed to the Finance Committee not having a vote, not participating in the direct process there is wrong. And I think the same thing is true with the Transportation Committee and several of the other committees. I think that the council representatives ought to continue to have a voice on those committees. The Environmental Committee, let's ask the Environmental Committee council members as to what their recommendation is on, as far as that committee. The Library Steering and Town Center Task Force, disbanding those two committees, I think we talked about that last meeting, and I think there was consensus that that's probably the way to go. The Transportation Committee, understand that there's a thought here about changing the scope of the committee. Maybe, maybe not. I think we ought to have a discussion about that. I certainly would like to see that committee become more involved with bike and pedestrian master plan. And again, I think the two council members on that committee should be, continue to be voting members of the committee. So I don't agree with the rationale, the city council reps should only be liaison-type people. I think if it's implemented that way, the staff and the resident chair would be setting the agendas entirely for these committees, and I don't think we ought to make these changes or delete council people from the committees. I also think that we ought to update the committee and commission application form. It's out of date, and I think some of the verbiage on it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Those are my comments.
So do I have any other council members who'd like to make comments or discussions on this item? Councilwoman Reese?
Thank you, I'm sorry. A couple of comments. I want to echo one of the comments that Councilman Whitner made. And no matter how we proceed, we should give every member that is currently serving an opportunity to know what we're doing prior to us doing it. Getting things left the night before is not a good action, and I think that we clearly, we clearly need people within our community to be involved, and we should respect their time as much as we use their time, and therefore give them the courtesy of knowing what we're doing prior to us doing it. I also want to echo some comments that members of the audience made related to the Arts Committee. I do have concerns of issues related to the Arts Committee and the history related to the Arts Committee, so I do have some deep concerns on that, and I would like to have some further discussions and talk to the town manager related to some historical issues related to that. So that is a deep concern of myself. I will echo as well as the comments related to the library and the Town Center Task Force, the dissolving of that. I am consistent with that. As far as the nepotism clause, we've had, you know, I guess this is one point, but, you know, it's not something that, you know, is out of control. Do we need it? I have to echo again Jerry's comments that say, you know, what's next? I think that at this point, we're not out of control, and it's something that we can deal with. I also want to echo Jerry's comments related to the revision of the application for committee selection. I think that we can do a better job at giving more information for us so that we can make better selections for the general public.
Thank you. Has another one here?
Sure, thanks. You know, overall, you know, as Jerry pointed out, we did this in August, and I understand that, you know, just because there's a new sheriff in town, albeit one that's commuting, it doesn't mean that we have to redo it. And so I think that we should, you know, let the, let the process go forward. We eliminated several committees, and even though we had it on the docket for months, it's still caused some consternation in the, in the community. You know, we want volunteers to participate. We want, this is the people's town, and they're paying the taxes, and they want to have a say. And they're the people that are here on a day-in, day-out basis. Many of our staff people, most of our staff people, don't live in town. And so it's the people that are here every day that see what they need to have. For example, with regards to the Transportation Committee, they need to be there. So, I'm really was surprised to see it here with regards to, you know, individual websites. I agree, we also addressed this, that there shouldn't be an individual websites or that they have to be vetted. So this was, this was covered last year when we, when we talked about the environmental programs, where there was a second website. Obviously, I'm not going to say too much about the nepotism clause. Obviously, I appointed my wife to the Planning Commission, and the mayor gave me a heck of a lot of publicity, and I appreciated that. You know, she's doing it, from what I understand from the people that are on the committee, she's doing a great job and is well, better prepared than many people. Those are just comments that I'm getting. So I'm not so sure that that was a bad appointment. I really don't think that we can take away the rights of any citizen in this town to participate in their government. With regards to the Art Committee, I mentioned to the city manager earlier, if we don't know what the Rita Corbett will says, then I'm not so sure that we should even have been making this comment. We need to do the proper research before we come up with these type of discussions, and we need to talk to the people on the committee. I think that the right people with the right education and the right skills should be put on those type of committees. So I don't, I don't agree with predisposing mayor and vice mayor with regards to audit and finance. Obviously, people like to take their turns on the different types of committees and gain insight, et cetera, et cetera, so I've got no issue with that. But I do have, I do, I don't think we should just predetermine who is on the committee and who isn't. And I do think the council members are playing an active role on the committees, and they should have a vote. They should bring the charge and the objective of what the, what the council is asking them to do, and they need to be able to come back here. If none of the committee members are here when an item is being brought back to the council, at least the council members can participate in that. I understand that Environmental Programs Committee, you know, we just reinstated it, so I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of conversation on this is what we should do with it or what, not what we shouldn't do with it, because I think that they're just going to start feeling their way with regards to what they're going to do. But I can say, the South Bay Waste Management Authority, you know, their education program is kind of a, if you want to go get education, you go get it. They don't come out and do things in the community. They come and tell us what the rates are going to be, and they did a very poor job at that. So requiring them or expecting them to come help us on environmental issues here in town, I think, is, is kind of a dream. With regards to, you know, the library and the Town Center, okay, I understand that the Town Center Task Force decided that perhaps they needed to disband. I think that that may be premature, because, and I know we're going to talk about that later, but there is some fundraising that needs to occur. Meanwhile, the library has money, and they need to make a decision on what to do. So I'm not so sure that combining them, as we're going to talk about later, or whatever, because one has tax dollars, the other doesn't, per our bond measure, I'm not sure that we don't need to have separate committees, at least for the time being. I think the Transportation Committee is a very valuable organization for our, for our town. It's the people that live in the community that are bringing these issues, as Mr. Sweeney brought up just recently. And I do think that it is a very valuable insight, and it also gets our employees in touch with different staff members. Now, I understand that when Mr. Danielson was here, you know, he suggested that perhaps Transportation Committee was a committee that we should look at disbanding because it was taking up a lot of time. You know, we had multiple police officers here, we had one or two different people from the Public Works, or from the Public Works Organization. And at that time, there was a discussion that maybe we should just have one staff member here, and he would pull people in on a time-and-again basis. So we expect that staff, if we believe that there are too many staff hours being put into a committee, we can address it with the committee, and we can also police ourselves by only having one staff member there and have somebody back and forth. I guess that's enough. Are we getting to the point where we're repeating things? So I will stop. Thank you.
So I'll wrap up here. I think that there may be some misunderstanding about this agenda item. This agenda item does not call for council to be taking any action tonight. This count, this agenda item was brought to us solely by staff, was not council-driven in any way, shape, or form. It is ideas and suggestions or recommendations from staff, city manager and other staff to have us talk about these issues and to bring it to the public for them to talk to us about these potential ideas or changes. And I appreciated all of the public's comments. I think that they were very well taken, and they do echo many of my own sentiments in the, in the perspective of the Arts Committee and others. And so my, if I'll go down my little list, everybody's gone down their list. Talking about the reports, the annual reports, what this agenda... Talking about the reports, the annual reports, what this agenda item says that the current resolution requires committees to give an annual report. I think that in the current resolution, we are not holding our committees and commissions to that resolution and requiring that they do give us an annual report, a summary of their activities the preceding year and what issues that they may be looking at or goals and objectives for the next year. So I understand that we don't want to make reports just for the sake of making reports and put it on wallpaper, but I think that they should be substantive summaries of the activities of the committee's year's work. Now, the monthly minutes or the committee minutes, if it's a quarterly or bimonthly, that is also very important and it should be posted to our website immediately. So then if we go into, so what the staff, what the recommendation is that be strengthened, that requirement for an annual report be strengthened to require that the chairperson formally present the report, not only just submit a written report, but present the report to council at the council meeting at the end of the year. I think that would be a very good venue for the chair of these specific committees to have that opportunity to say, "Look what we've been doing all this year." So I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater here. I think there, you know, I think that is something that is reasonable and rational to do. Websites, our current resolution allows that a committee or commission can create a website. And so what we're, what I think staff is suggesting, I'm not saying we, but because I didn't write this or have a part in structuring it, that staff's suggesting that this language be strengthened, just to require that if a committee or commission, say the Arts Committee, that it falls under the purview of our existing website, town website, and maybe the look and feel, because we are going to be completely redoing our website. So that's something that I think staff and council should consider. Appointments, the nepotism clause, I think that there are numbers of cities and jurisdictions, all of and down San Mateo County, that have this clause in their committee and commission's resolution. And that may be where the city manager's coming from. That's something that is up to council to discuss and to get input from our residents on. The Arts Committee, again, I think that that is something that deserves very, very careful consideration because it has been such a part of the fabric of our town's heritage and it's a very important committee and activity for our town to participate in. So going on, Audit and Finance Committee, I think it's important that the sitting mayor and vice mayor, I think that there has been historical references to it being a good policy to have them be part of the Finance Committee because they are with the town management on a more active basis. Environmental Programs Committee, I think that it's a very worthwhile committee. I think that if it can be reconstituted and put, I think it can be very valuable going forward. So the Library Steering Committee and the Town Center Task Force Committee, I do believe that both of those committees should be disbanded and that going forward, we can look at reconstituting a new ad hoc advisory committee for master plan and for the new project. Transportation Committee, that's, that again, is something that needs more discussion. It provides a very valuable conduit for information gathering, for the public to have an opportunity to talk about issues in their neighborhood. I think that having more staff involvement or the comments versus going to Public Works or Transportation Traffic for that vetting before coming straight to Transportation, maybe that is the way to do it, but I think it's, it does offer that. So be that as it says, I think that this was just for discussion, it is not for action. So that's why no committee members were notified because there's no action being taken. So it's not like you're going to get a pink slip tomorrow about your committee or commission. So I think that at this point, I'd like to just receive this information and I think that there's no action that's going to be taken unless we want to direct staff to, to go back and research, say, the history of the Arts Committee and get more information about that. I just, but I think that at this point, it should be just left alone. Do you have a comment on that, how we should proceed?
No, I think we may have inputs of the city manager. You've got the inputs there. What do you intend to do as a result of that?
Well, as you've got the library building steering committee and the Town Center Task Force item later, so that will dictate whether those two committees get adjusted. The annual reports, as the mayor mentioned, that's already a requirement. It was just recommended that it be strengthened to require that the chairperson come to a council meeting, make a presentation to allow more public input into their annual activities as a way to get the information out to the community. But it doesn't seem to be that that's a recommendation to full council, so we'll leave that one off. In terms of websites, the recommendation there was that we continue to get a look and feel. The committee's current resolution allows committees to create their own website. Our concern was that they're out there creating their own websites and they're not following the same look and feel of the town website. But again, there's no consensus here to put that one in there. In terms of appointments and the nepotism policy, we'll leave that one off as well.
Can we maybe stop on this website thing? Is there not a consensus here?
Well, I thought we covered that last year. So I think we need to...